Test. Test one, two, three.
The library presentation.
We'll call to order the city council meeting for Monday, October 16th, 2023. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wasn't testing my patience. I was waiting for Greg to hit the button. He was still sitting. I didn't want to start with that one. Yes. I always try to look to make sure everyone's actually ready to say it before I start flirting it up. But anyway, roll call. Here.
Here. Tim Petry. Bonnie Shimalunas. Scott Steckmesser. Adam Hosky. All present.
You can skip over number four, seeing everyone is here. Moving right on to number five, which is a public hearing. We have one, which is under A. It is a conditional use permit for operation of a drive-through accessing 15th Street at 1509 Washington Street submitted by David Church applicant and owner. The recommended action is a motion to approve the conditional use permit as recommended by the Plan Commission. Any background before we open it up, Greg?
Okay. This is in front of you tonight with recommendation for approval from the city's Plan Commission. Among the various types of business uses that require a conditional use permit are any with drive-through facilities. And the owner of what was Schwarz's Pub in Delhi or Bank First National, if you go back far enough, at 1509 Washington Street, David Church, by the way, Mr. Church is here in the front row and ready to answer any questions if council or the public might have them, has filed an application that's gone through Plan Commission for a drive-through facility that would involve ingress, excuse me, entering from and exiting to 15th Street as the, as the bank at one time had a drive-through that entered and exited off 15th Street. That also being consistent with our recent ordinance amendment that prohibits any new curb cuts onto Washington Street or new driveway openings for drive-through facilities. This would be a, as shown in your packets, it is a, a national chain food and, food and beverage facility. And so you have in your packets the draft conditional use permit with conditions proposed that, let's see, that it effective on execution and recording. Of course, these are all recorded documents. Just skipping down, hours of operation would be during regular business hours for the, the business on premises and signage in accord with the city's sign code. This development would still be subject to site and architectural plan review and approval at Plan Commission, which should come at a later time.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will now open it up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to solely speak on this topic can step up to the microphone, my right and your left, state your name and address for the record, and we will have three calls in the public hearing. We are opening up call number one. Closing call one and opening up call number two. We will close call two and open up the third and final call of the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. We'll swing it back to the council looking for a motion to approve this.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Second by Bill. Council discussion. Yes, Tracy.
Well, I have a question for Mr. Church. So was there a reason why you couldn't just alter the building instead of ripping it down?
Thank you for having me, David Church. The short answer would be no. So when I identified the site as a potential opportunity to acquire a piece of commercial real estate, typically what I'll do is respond to the marketplace and see what type of either backfill reuse of the existing structure or building, or if there's a possible development scenario and the demand and interest levels from a national user with a very specific brand that, you know, along the lines of a McDonald's, you just can't tell them, they have to build their prototype. So reusing the existing building is not an option for what my intended use is.
Oh, it's a Starbucks. We know that.
Yeah. It's not a secret.
No. What was on the application? I know they don't franchise. So my next, my next question would be is if for some reason it doesn't go based on their operating plan, because I did call Tim. What? Because if it's one of their specific footprints, I can't imagine somebody else wanting to come in and use a Starbucks footprint if they're.
It's irrelevant that I'm not a coffee drinker, but you know, the analytics and the metrics that Starbucks would use to say, we want to invest millions of dollars into this community, I don't question it. So when it, it's a very rigorous, you know, benchmark that they have to meet in order to green light a store like this. So, you know, when, what I'm saying is the likelihood there's, Starbucks will relocate, sometimes go from an inline space to a freestanding space, but their track record of success is almost unparalleled. So it's a hypothetical that, you know, I can't really answer what my plan would be, but.
Are you owning the property or?
Yes. Yeah. I already bought the property.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions as it relates to the drive-through? See none, roll call vote.
Tracy Coach.
Oh.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petry.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
At Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Hosky.
Aye.
Jeff Doak.
Aye.
Seven to one, motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much for being here, Mr. Church. We appreciate that very much. And we will move to number six, which is input from the public. Anyone wishing to talk on something that's on this agenda, something they'd like to see on a future agenda, please step up to the podium, my right, your left, state your name and address for the record. Input from the public. Feel free. All right. See none. We will move on to number seven, which is council communications. Any council members have anything they'd like to share with the rest of council at this time?
I'm sure we all got the letter and I actually, I didn't get it until a few weeks ago, but about the windmill out in the industrial park. Everybody get that? I just wanted to address it and just so that the guy didn't feel like I was just blowing him off, but I went out there and it didn't seem any, anything abnormal. I mean, you could hear it, but.
I did too.
Yeah, Bill went out there too. Yeah.
Three different times, either different wind direction, different speed. Cars are much louder. I mean, you can hear it. I, if I had a DB tester, it's gotta be real low, the sound, and it didn't seem to matter a whole lot. When it was going slower, it did make a separate sound.
The bearing going up.
When it was going, I don't think so.
That's what a sound like to me.
But I also went to Orion lighting.
Orion?
Orion. And basically that, that one sounds exactly the same. It's, yeah, theirs right next to the building, so.
I stopped out there. I noticed pretty much similar to you guys. I know Greg has stopped out there as well and took notice of some noise one day, maybe not so much the other day. Probably has something to do with also how fast the wind is blowing, which may make it a little bit louder. Jeff, yeah, I kind of see what you're saying that when I stopped out there, it did kind of sound like maybe a bearing was starting to go, and that could be the case. Obviously, there's got to be some bearings in there, I'd imagine. But yeah, I think everyone got that letter. Tim says he didn't, so I don't know if they just missed him or what. I'll forward a copy of it to council member Petry.
We have had some staff review of it, and that will continue, including discussion with planning and zoning and the city attorney. The property is in the industrial park, zoned industrial, and the complaint is from a property in the town, so that gives a little bit of a wrinkle too, because we don't have generally responsibility for reporting our place where it's outside of our corporate limit. We want to be good neighbors and certainly Mr. Plager and all energy management as well. So we'll report back on that, but I know council president and maybe others have been in touch with the individual that had the concerns, and I've spoken with all energy management and we'll, we'll continue looking into that.
I also got one wondering about spectrum again. Any updated?
I don't have anything to say I haven't said before, which is very disappointing, especially since it's all spectrum customers that are wanting to watch it because other people are streaming it. If you didn't have spectrum cable, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be wondering why it's not on cable. And I've, all I've concluded is they devote very little resources or attention to public access programming or public ex, not programming, heck, just public access channels. Rick, I assume you didn't get anything new?
No. I was gonna try to get a holding bag today, and I just didn't get a chance to see if we can get another or getting updated.
We continually hear we're getting closer, which is better than hearing we're getting farther away, but it's very, it's not very encouraging. Sorry, not to be too snarky about it, but very discouraging.
And also I got one, just one message about this one. It was about the laundromat, and I looked and there was a lot of Facebook chatter about it too, about the one laundromat in town being dirty and wondering if council could do anything about it. I don't think we can, it's not, it's out of our jurisdiction.
Yeah, I don't, it wouldn't be anything we would take care of as a council or even as a city. I mean, their best luck would be to maybe contact the health department. There may be something that the health department can do, but I don't know if they routinely check laundromats or not.
I don't even know that, there's no part of the city government that can look into that, is there?
Not a zone, cleanliness isn't a zoning violation.
There are circumstances where it might amount to a nuisance. I, I don't know if that's the case here or not, however.
I wouldn't think so.
I think the complaints are from what people experience when they walk in, into the business, so.
I see.
I don't, I'm not aware of any externalities like odors or sound or things that emanate beyond the property.
Right.
That'd be really bad, but yeah. And honestly, we haven't, we haven't as a staff checked, we haven't had a direct communication. Again, it's been Facebook chatter as to whether there's even a county health department role there. I don't know.
I started on to them.
Yeah. Anything else, Jeff? Nope, that was it. Okay, Tim?
I was contacted today by the residents that live around Kingdom Hall, that they had heard that that was going to be used for storage and.
But his zoning did what?
They didn't get back.
Oh, okay. I, I'm pretty confident I can say that, Elizabeth, you want to address that? That has been a topic for, for inspections and zoning. Yep, that's on 45th Street, the private residence that formerly was Kingdom Hall.
What I, what I could do is just update you that we have sent a letter to this property owner to tell him to stop doing the advert for storing. I don't know off the top of my head when that letter was sent, and if he hasn't stopped, we, we could do a follow-up letter. I mean, we would have to get to the point of it being three, you know, to get into the chronic nuisance designation, but I think that you and I conversed about it in terms of him doing that and then whether or not you had heard if he had stopped.
It was probably three weeks ago. I can just say this past weekend, I didn't note any campers. I think that was one of the things, any campers or large.
I don't know if it's increased and, and it's been worse, but we did know that the sign was taking, taken down in terms of him saying, you know, you can store things here because obviously that's not allowed, but you know, we will check again in terms of his complying with us, telling him not to do that.
I drove by there on the way home from work today, and there was no signs or, or anything in the parking lot that would indicate storage or anything.
Okay, thank you. So that's what we've done at this point.
That shouldn't take those three nuisances.
No, I'm just saying that that's what we would do.
All three letters that you need to send up because they're violating the.
Correct, if he didn't follow through, right? But we have sent at least one at this point.
Okay. Okay. Can we make sure that inspections gets back to the person that contacted him? Do you know who it was? Or can you send an email over to Elizabeth and make sure that we get back to that resident tomorrow?
Sure, we certainly can follow up with that individual.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is that it, Tim?
There's some people that called me about the Boston swings.
Hey, Mike, are you aware of those? Okay, Mike will take note of that, and he'll have Jared and his staff take a peek at that tomorrow. Is my mic? Oh, it's Tim's.
Yeah. Okay. The, yeah, there was a complaint again on Facebook. I happened to see that one. It's not our official means of intake for complaints, but a couple of weekends ago there was a strap swing or sling type swing that broke over at Nishoda. Those have been inspected. That's, that swing replaced, so, but.
Okay.
We haven't heard anything about it at the library.
Okay, so Mike and his staff will take care of that tomorrow. Take a look at that. Thank you. Jeff?
Did forget one. This was, I forgot to do it last regular meeting. Somebody called me and asked me, it was an odd question. They wanted to know what the city's bond rating is, Dave or Greg? You guys will probably have to answer that one.
Provide it to you. Yeah, and we haven't gone out for a rated issue in four or five years, but it would be whatever the most recent rating was. Yeah.
Anybody else? All right. We will move on to number eight, council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Anyone have anything they'd like to report on? Darla?
For the environmental advisory board, we had our first education, our winter educational series presentation back on October 5th, and it was on benefits of renewable resources. And Brian Delman, who's our electric department director of the Two Rivers Utilities, and Brady Steig, Steigkauf from Focus on Energy, as well as Tom Bolt from WPPI, who came to talk about this topic. And I asked, I asked Brian Delman if he would come up and maybe just speak a little bit on what we learned that night, and there's a lot more going on that's advantageous for, for users that I wasn't aware of, and I'm assuming that a lot of people are not aware of as well.
Good evening, everybody. It was a very well-attended meeting on a, on the 5th of the month. As Darla mentioned, we had representation from WPPI and Focus on Energy. The gentleman from Focus on Energy explained a lot of the different incentives and rebates that are offered to all residents of Wisconsin. In fact, every household into Rivers is eligible for a free pack of whether it's light bulbs or high-efficiency showerheads or water restrictions for their faucets and stuff like that. So if you go on the focusonenergy.com website, you can actually go to the section of services, and there's an area that you can actually claim your free pack provided from Focus on Energy. He also mentioned a lot of the rebates and programs as far as heating and cooling systems, water heaters, various thermostats controlled by Wi-Fi. You can go and just remotely from your phone control your heating and cooling. As far as the utility itself and WPPI working together, obviously, last year we used the, the two programs between the city and the WPPI program of the tree rebates, and we also offer the various appliance rebates, washers, dryers, refrigerators, that sort of thing. So it was, like I said, an eye-opener for a lot of people, some information that we try to get out to the, to the customers best we can, but like Darla said, the more we repeat it, you know, more people will take advantage of the programs.
And if you call the electric department and they will give you the link to all these rebates, and there's, there's more, I mean, I was astounded by some of the things that, that they will, you know, what they'll do or offer.
And also there is income qualified programs too that you, definitely people can look into as well that might be financially struggling, so.
Well, thank you, and thank you for helping me out the other night and for reluctantly coming up tonight to talk about it. Our next, our next program is going to be on November the 2nd, and it's creating fun and resilient parks, and that is going to be presented by Mike Mathis, who is our Parks and Rec Director. And his topic is really, really interesting because he's going to discuss the city's development of innovative, resilient, and most importantly, fun new parks. And you can learn about the triple bottom line, a sustainability framework with three parts, social, environmental, and economic. And Mike will share dynamic park projects happening across the country and how Two Rivers is putting similar ideas into practice. So I'm really looking forward to that one, and we're getting a lot better with promoting these presentations, so hopefully that's very well-attended. I did add a date on and with Jeff Dawson and Terry L. over at the library. John Reisenbeekler from Manitowoc Recycling Center will be presenting in, on the 7th of May. There's a lot going on with recyclables, and I know that people have questions as to what we put out on the sidewalk for recycling, is it actually getting recycled? So he will have a lot of information about that and just kind of what the industry is going through right now and how it affects us. So that's what's going on with EAB. For Main Street, we're winding down for the city. The only thing that we've got on the books right now is the Wine Walk, and that's at the end of this month. After that, we're just going to, we're just going to regroup and talk about the next season and how we can improve on the different programs that we already have, and also to talk about perhaps some new ones. So the Main, Main Street is a lot more dynamic than it's been in the past, and I think we'll have some very exciting things that the community can enjoy.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Jeff?
Thursday, we did the review of the budget again in personnel and finance, and this week, I believe Greg, on Thursday, we get the meeting at six, and we're going to start getting into the meat of the budget, correct?
Yes. General fund review will be this Thursday and next week, Thursday. We'll start this week with public safety budgets, so there's about half of the general fund right there and general government, and then public works, parks and rec, some of the miscellaneous budgets next week, Thursday. So you'll get a summary as council at the first meeting in November of where we are, but if you, if you're interested in sitting in on a couple of heavy-duty review sessions, the next two weeks would be good, and then it's, I think the first week in November is joint with the Utilities Committee relative to the utility budgets, so.
If anybody out there wants to get in and start watching some of these, it's really rather informative, time-consuming, informative.
Anybody else? Yes, Tracy?
Last week, the library board met, and Terry, who does, Terry Hill, who does the youth programs, presented some of the, the, over the past year, numbers of participants which increased.
Elizabeth, you want to address that? That has been a topic for inspections and zoning. Yep, that's on Forty-Fifth Street, the private residence that formerly was Kingdom Hall.
What I could do is just update you that we have sent a letter to this property owner to tell him to stop doing the advert for storing. I don't know off the top of my head when that letter was sent. And if he hasn't stopped, we could do a follow-up letter. I mean, we would have to get to the point of it being three, you know, to get into the chronic nuisance designation. But I think that you and I conversed about it in terms of him doing that and then whether or not you had heard if he had stopped.
It was probably three weeks ago. I can just say this past weekend, I didn't note any campers. I think that was one of the things, any campers or large.
Did there.
I don't know if it's increased and it's been worse, but we did know that the sign was taken down in terms of him saying, you know, you can store things here because obviously that's not allowed. But, you know, we will check again in terms of his complying with us, telling him not to do that.
I drove by there on the way home from work today and there was no signs or anything in the parking lot that would indicate storage or anything.
Okay, thank you. So that's what we've done at this point.
That shouldn't take those three nuisances.
No, I'm just saying that that's what we would do.
All three letters that you need to send up because they're violating the.
If he didn't follow through, right, but we have sent at least one at this point.
Okay. Can we make sure that inspections gets back to the person that contacted him? Do you know who it was? Or can you send an email over to Elizabeth and make sure that we get back to that resident tomorrow?
Sure, we certainly can follow up with that individual.
Thank you. Is that it, Tim? Hey, Mike, are you aware of those? Okay, Mike will take note of that and he'll have Jared and his staff take a peek at that tomorrow. Is my mic? Oh, it's Tim's.
Okay. Yeah, there was a complaint again on Facebook. I happen to see that one. It's not our official means of intake for complaints. But a couple of weekends ago, there was a strap swing or sling type swing that broke over at Neshota. Those have been inspected. That swing replaced, so.
Okay.
We haven't heard anything about it at the library.
Okay, so Mike and his staff will take care of that tomorrow. Take a look at that. Thank you. Jeff?
I did forget one. This was, I forgot to do it last regular meeting. Somebody called me and asked me, it was an odd question. They wanted to know what the city's bond rating is. Dave or Greg, you guys will probably have to answer that one.
Provide it to you. Yeah, and we haven't gone out for a rated issue in four or five years, but it would be whatever the most recent rating was.
Anybody else? All right, we will move on to number eight, council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Anyone have anything they'd like to report on? Darla?
For the Environmental Advisory Board, we had our first education, our winter educational series presentation back on October 5th, and it was on benefits of renewable resources. And Brian Delman, who's our Electric Department Director of the Two Rivers Utilities, and Brady Steigkauf from Focus on Energy, as well as Tom Bolt from WPPI, who came to talk about this topic. And I asked, I asked Brian Delman if he would come up and maybe just speak a little bit on what we learned that night. And there's a lot more going on that's advantageous for users that I wasn't aware of, and I'm assuming that a lot of people are not aware of as well.
Good evening, everybody. It was a very well-attended meeting on the 5th of the month. As Darla mentioned, we had representation from WPPI and Focus on Energy. The gentleman from Focus on Energy explained a lot of the different incentives and rebates that are offered to all residents of Wisconsin. In fact, every household in Two Rivers is eligible for a free pack of, whether it's light bulbs or high-efficiency showerheads or water restrictions for their faucets and stuff like that. So if you go on the focusonenergy.com website, you can actually go to the section of services and there's an area that you can actually claim your free pack provided from Focus on Energy. He also mentioned a lot of the rebates and programs as far as heating and cooling systems, water heaters, various thermostats controlled by Wi-Fi. You can go and just remotely from your phone control your heating and cooling. As far as the utility itself and WPPI working together, obviously, last year, we used the two programs between the city and the WPPI program of the tree rebates. And we also offer the various appliance rebates, washers, dryers, refrigerators, that sort of thing. So it was, like I said, an eye-opener for a lot of people. Some information that we try to get out to the customers best we can. But like Darla said, the more we repeat it, you know, more people will take advantage of the programs.
And if you call the Electric Department and they will give you the link to all these rebates. And there's more. I mean, I was astounded by some of the things that they will, you know, what they'll do or offer.
And also there is income-qualified programs too that you definitely, people can look into as well that might be financially struggling, so.
Well, thank you, and thank you for helping me out the other night and for reluctantly coming up tonight to talk about it. Our next program is going to be on November the 2nd, and it's creating fun and resilient parks. And that is going to be presented by Mike Mathis, who is our Parks and Rec Director. And his topic is really, really interesting because he's going to discuss the city's development of innovative, resilient, and most importantly, fun new parks. And you can learn about the triple bottom line, a sustainability framework with three parts, social, environmental, and economic. And Mike will share dynamic park projects happening across the country and how Two Rivers is putting similar ideas into practice. So I'm really looking forward to that one, and we're getting a lot better with promoting these presentations. So hopefully that's very well-attended. I did add a date on, and with Jeff Dawson and Terry L. over at the library. John Reisenbeekler from Manitowoc Recycling Center will be presenting on the 7th of May. There's a lot going on with recyclables, and I know that people have questions as to what we put out on the sidewalk for recycling, is it actually getting recycled? So he will have a lot of information about that and just kind of what the industry is going through right now and how it affects us. So that's what's going on with EAB. For Main Street, we're winding down for the city. The only thing that we've got on the books right now is the Wine Walk, and that's at the end of this month. After that, we're just going to, we're just going to regroup and talk about the next season and how we can improve on the different programs that we already have, and also to talk about perhaps some new ones. So the Main Street is a lot more dynamic than it's been in the past, and I think we'll have some very exciting things that the community can enjoy.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Jeff?
Thursday, we did the review of the budget again in Personnel and Finance. And this week, I believe, Greg, on Thursday, we get the meeting at 6:00, and we're going to start getting into the meat of the budget, correct?
Yes, general fund review will be this Thursday and next week, Thursday. We'll start this week with public safety budgets, so there's about half of the general fund right there and general government. And then Public Works, Parks and Rec, some of the miscellaneous budgets next week, Thursday. So you'll get a summary as council at the first meeting in November of where we are. But if you're interested in sitting in on a couple of heavy-duty review sessions, the next two weeks would be good, and then it's, I think, the first week in November is joint with the Utilities Committee relative to the utility budgets.
If anybody out there wants to get in and start watching some of these, it's really rather informative. Time-consuming, informative.
Anybody else? Yes, Tracy?
Last week, the library board met, and Terry, who does Terry Hill? Who does the youth programs, presented some of the, over the past year, numbers of participants which increased, but also some of the changes that are coming with things like, this is one I liked, the Reach Out to Read Program. It's actually a nationwide program that our library and Manitowoc participate in with local pediatric centers and hospitals to provide books to kids who are being treated. And it's expanding to both our Two Rivers Police Department and the Manitowoc Police Department, where they'll be providing books rather than the teddy bears for kids who are in sensitive situations. And I thought that was pretty cool. And they are working with the school district to put together mental health resource for families kits that will be available at some point. Might not till next year possibly, but that's coming too. So the library is very active in that sort of thing as well. It's just plain fun stuff, like the Treasure Quest. That was a challenge.
Stuff coming out of the library, absolutely. Anybody else?
No. Adults did it. A group of teachers did the Treasure Quest. I thought that was pretty cool.
Advisory Rec Board met last week as well. We talked about the Open Space Plan and a survey that is going to be going out live. I think, Mike, is that done yet? Yes, hopefully by the end of the week, we will have a live survey going on open space. I think it's up to like 12 or 13 questions, something like that. So if you've got some time, want to go fill that out and help us determine what we want to do next in our park system and all the open space, please jump online and take that survey. We also talked about the new playground, the Open House, which got kicked back a week due to weather and installation purposes. Is next, or actually this Sunday, I think at noon, correct? At noon to 2:00, so same event taking place at Neshota Park. The park is open. My family went down there and enjoyed it on Sunday. There were a ton of people there. And it was certainly a lot of fun. We also talked about the upcoming ice skate rink and skate rentals. So good stuff to come there. I think that ice is getting put down late November from what I was told at the meeting. So good things coming out of the Parks and Rec Department. Onto number nine, City Managers Report. Greg?
First up, I'd like to have Matt Heckenleibel, our Public Works Director, come forward to introduce Benjamin Dax. Ben is our newest Public Works Maintenance Worker onboard with the department, oh, about two weeks now. Gentlemen, four already. Time flies. Very good. Especially when you're having fun. So, good evening. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce to you Benjamin Ben Dax, our Public Works Maintenance Worker. Ben and his family have been residents of Two Rivers for the past 11 years. For the past 23 years, Ben has been working in various trades, concrete work, post-frame and stick-built structure construction, and most recently, the sewer and water installation industry, and has a very strong background in operating heavy equipment. In Ben's spare time, he enjoys coaching his daughter's tournament softball team and watching his youngest daughter play ball as well. Ben has been with us since September 25th and is learning how Two Rivers Public Works Department does things. Ben has stated that he is grateful to be working for the city of Two Rivers and looks forward to what the future holds for him. I'm happy to have Ben onboard and believe that he will make a great employee and be able to make and provide difference in perspective and how we might be able to improve things. So with that, please welcome Ben Dax to the city of Two Rivers.
Like all of our departments, we've got a crew in Public Works that I'll stack up against any in any city, big or small. So Ben joins a very good team down there. We appreciate his being here tonight. By way of update, fall arrived on the lake shore late last week, so just, you know, only in Two Rivers can you go and maybe grab yourself a Big Mac at the drive-thru and then cruise over by the lake and have a view like that thrown in for free and fit it all in. Not that I did that. On the personnel front, because we're a service business, we run on people. We continue to accept and review applications. There has been one interview for the building inspector position. There were interviews last Friday and again today for Police Secretary and Evidence Custodian, very responsible position in the police department. I believe 56 total applicants on that chief, so that selection process well underway. Interviews have been completed for the Community House Receptionist Part-Time Position and the Full-Time Position of Recreation Clerk, so we hope we're close. They're backgrounding some finalist candidates for those positions. I would add that we do have an opening, I'll be advertising very shortly, for the Position of Tourism Director as well, working with Explore Two Rivers and our Room Tax Commission, that position within the Economic Development, Community Development Department here at City Hall. So watch for that ad to come out very shortly. Like to ask our Andrew Skawati, our Water Utility Director, up to speak to the next item, which is a job well-done Employee Recognition Award for Chris Wondrich down at GPW. Andrew?
Well, you guys can see from the pictures, this was our old Truck 22. Inside one of the cabinets, we had this crucial piece of equipment here that we use for turning valves out in the street. Truck 22 would see better days if you were looking at replacing it with going with the leased vehicles. We ran into a tricky situation of how we're going to make this piece of equipment work. This piece of equipment actually utilized the engine on Truck 22 to make the hydraulics and everything work. So ran into kind of a situation where it really didn't seem viable that we'd be able to use it. So I probably sold a new one. It came back extremely high, it was about $30,000. So I looked over at Chris in the garage and I asked him. I said, hey, if you collaborate with me a little bit on this and see if there's a way that we could take this machine that still fundamentally works very well and address it to use it with the new leased vehicles. And he took the bull by the horns. He torn out of the old truck. He mounted it into a system that can adjust for any new vehicle we get, so it can fit in anything we have. He went and followed the old lawnmower engine, redid all the bolts and pulleys to make it work. And the finished product, I mean, looks like it came out of the salesman floor. It could have been happier. Chris actually won an award through the AWWA for 2023. It's called the Gimmicks and Gadgets. It's basically an award that addresses things like this in the water utility world where, you know, we save a substantial amount of money working with the tools that we have, trying to keep our costs down. And this was huge. Chris was able to actually put this whole thing together for about $5,000. So we saved $25,000 not having to buy this new piece of machinery. So it was really cool, a collaboration between departments, and Chris did an amazing job. So I just want to congratulate him on his award for the year.
So the attorney get a Gimmicks and Gadgets Award. When you're figuring out how stuff works, that works very, very well. Actually, if Andrew wants to sort of stick around and Brian Delman, our Electric Utility Director, come up, both of these gentlemen work with our Utilities Administrative Assistant Gina Sampe, who was recognized by the folks on the electric side, our electric suppliers at WPPI. Brian, do you want to share that?
All right, round two. So annually, WPPI holds an annual meeting, and every year, they have various different awards that can be, utilities can nominate people for. I nominated now for the second year an employee from the electric utility. Last year was Paul Fabian, our Line Crew Foreman, and now this year was Gina Sampe. Gina's been with us just over two and a half years, but in total, probably eight years total in the utility world. It basically is an employee that goes above and beyond the call of duty and is showing growth and leadership within their utility. So I put together a nomination for Gina and received confirmation about two months later that she was selected. And I brought her down to the Sheboygan Annual Conference, and she was presented with her award. Add some to that.
Fair for this one. I mean, I think the Shining Star Award says it all. I mean, everything we asked Gina to do, she does it. She does it way beyond even what my expectations are. If anybody here hasn't been able to view it yet, on the Water Utility website is our Water Quality Report. Just take a look at what she did from 2021 to 2022. It is a document that was written by the DNR about all the things we test for, all the results. Nobody wanted to read it. It was boring. I didn't even want to read it. I mean, I looked at it, but nobody in the public wanted to actually look at it. She turned it into this amazing document that I hope everybody in the community will appreciate and can actually view it easily and get some information about what we do and how our water affects everybody in the community. But it just goes to show to her level of dedication to the community.
One other thing too, in your council packets, another thing that she has done, the electric report monthly used to be just a black and white numbers, no graphs, no thrills and frills. But you look at your most recent ones, the last couple of months, she's put graphs together and it made it a wow document, so.
I'd just chime in. She's certainly a team player, works with Lisa on fundraising posters and special presentations related to Central Park West financing. That's what we strive for. We're not in silos, but departments with talents helping out other departments. So again, I interrupted the applause almost there. Congratulations to Gina on that recognition. Thanks, guys. We just note, the other guy standing at the back of the room, Matt, would be the guy to contact if you wonder where the leaf collection is on your street. That was the case even when we had only three zones in the city for pickup. But the crews are out in full swing now on leaf collection, and there are updates taking place out on the city's website and on social media as to where the trucks are, trying to direct the resources better to where the leaves, the leaves don't always fall the same. So trying to work it out so we are putting resources where the need is. So that is underway right now. And by the looks of some of the trees that are really green yet, we're going to have an extended leaf collection season this year. Neshota Park was mentioned earlier. As soon as the port-in-place surfacing had cured after installation, the Rec Director was out there last Sunday taking some fence down. And the Wang family was the first family to stop and let their picture be taken there on the new structures. But as Adam reported, it was busy out there Sunday. The word got out through social media and word of mouth, families out enjoying the new park. So very happy that this council saw fit to make that investment. There's a very well-thought-out master plan for Neshota Park, and we're hoping to keep that moving forward and just make that jewel of our park system better every year. Just a reminder again, that dedication event is noon to 2:00 p.m. this Sunday, October 22. Free cider and donuts. Cool City Brewing will be there, serving various coffee drinks, all sales proceeds to support continued park improvements. There's still some good weather yet. Get out with your kids, your grandkids, or if you're an adult, you might like going through there, this new fully accessible, inclusive destination playground at Neshota Park. Just a section of East River Street now improved with trail extension. Terrace area, as shown, probably top right shows it the best, an extended terrace area that separates a new trail from the roadway. Some fencing there in the areas that overlook the harbor. We hope to continue that to the Washington Street Bridge. This project, we've deferred a couple of years. We've had discussions about an easement agreement with Kozlowski Automotive, need to finalize that. And we've been kind of pausing to tie into the improvements on the Washington Street Bridge. It'll be started next fall with the new dedicated bike and pedestrian facility on the Downriver or McDonald's side of the bridge that the city will be installing next fall in advance of the DOT resurfacing Highway 42 all the way from Manitowoc to the Washington Street Bridge. But this really looks pretty. It took out some very, very underutilized parking spaces, got rid of some asphalt along there, and is working to extend our off-street trail connection.
We have some signage off of Washington Street indicating that that is a trail. So bikers know that they can freely bike on that, not that they think it's a sidewalk.
You know, you probably could do something right there. We do have signage that indicates Two Mariners Trail southbound or Two Raleigh Point Trail northbound at that intersection.
Okay.
Those could be amped up a little too. It's pretty modest signage. You've got to be watching for it. Routine maintenance through Utility Service Company this year on the East Side Water Tower. The most visible thing that happened, of course, is on the outside with putting the city logo, current new city logo and name of the city up there. That tower had been blank since its last painting. Also, though, there's been very extensive work done on the interior of the tower with sandblasting and recoding of the interior. I know Andrew talked with the Utilities Committee. It was identified with this year's inspection that there are some structural issues up there where the roof meets the sidewalls of the tower, and we're waiting for some engineering reports on that. That's going to be a little bit bigger repair and maintenance project next year on that East Side Tower. But nice job by our contractor, and we tried to work around those existing cell phone antennas as best we could. I think the city gets about $32,000 a year in lease payments. And EnSite actually sent a letter just last week saying they want to mount two more antennas up there. So hopefully they can just go in those two empty racks that are shown to the right of the two existing towers. But that'll up the lease income just a little more and hopefully improve people's sale reception around town. We would remind you, the Senior Center Health Fair is scheduled this Wednesday, the 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon over at the Community House. They've got over 45 vendors. You can have various health screenings, free continental breakfast. I think they're offering some, whoops, sorry, I think they're offering some shots, yeah, flu vaccinations over there. So Senior Health Fair, usually very well-attended this Thursday, I say Wednesday, this Thursday over at the Community House. Two Rivers Main Street is hosting their Fall Wine and Beer Walk. That's on Friday, October 27. Tickets are available in advance. Either go to a link on Main Street's website or you can purchase tickets in person downtown at the Main Street office or at Seeds and Beans in downtown Two Rivers. Fully expect that event will be a sellout. I think at the last Main Street meeting, we heard about 50 tickets were sold already. So if you want to attend, you'd do well to purchase your $30 ticket in advance. There's a commemorative glass and different wine and beer offerings and some food offerings at various stops around the downtown. Nice event.
I think we're up to about 70 now.
70, really?
Yeah, it's growing.
Yeah, the Fall Walk especially has really got legs under it, no pun intended.
Costumes.
Yes, and costumes are encouraged.
And adult Halloween trick-or-treating is awesome.
And I know that a lot of people sign up right at the last minute because they don't know what the weather's going to be. So that's when we really get a lot of people, so it's always really successful.
If you compliment somebody on their costume and they say, "I'm not in costume," well, just comment on the wine or beer and keep the conversation going. Friday night, or I'm sorry, that's Friday night, Saturday morning into the early afternoon is Downtown Trick or Treat, 11:00 to 2:00 in downtown Two Rivers. That usually brings out several hundred, pushing 1,000 kids, along with some good-spirited parents and adult accompaniment. So that is 11:00 to 2:00, Saturday before Halloween. And then citywide trick-or-treat hours are on the real Halloween. We stick with that. October 31st, that's 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. And per tradition, and for good practice, if you want the little ghosts and goblins coming up to your front door, put that front porch light on. The Community House, excuse me, the Senior Center is again offering the Community Thanksgiving Meal. I think this is, I don't know if this is the first time back after COVID, maybe, it is, yeah. Back, that is on Thursday, the 23rd. There's an invitation certainly to the community to attend, reach out to the Senior Center, and volunteers are appreciated as well. Great community event, and historically, it's filled up, the Senior Center, the COSCA Room. Great community event and historically it's filled up the Senior Center, the COSCO Room and the library. So, and appreciate all the organizations that support that community Thanksgiving meal. Park restrooms will be closed for the season in most of the parks as of the end of this week. So if you're out and about, plan accordingly. The Neshota Park and Beach Restrooms will stay open until the 23rd, so they'll be open through the coming weekend. Is that similarly the schedule, do you know, Mike, for out at Mariners Trail at the wayside opposite Woodland? That'll be closing down basically after this weekend as well. Time flies. Yeah. Council member Darla Leclair had shared this with me. She was looking at a, at a Two Rivers history and this august, looking mostly old white male group is the Two Rivers City Council meeting in 1925. And that's the city council, city manager, city clerk and city attorney, looking pretty august and sitting around a table somewhere. That would have been in the first year of Two Rivers operation under council manager government, which was adopted by popular vote of the community in 1924.
I'd just like to say that it was Amy Matuski who forwarded to me. And if you look at the, it's hard to read the names, but you can recognize some of the names, Gunya, Kalenberg, Tati. So those, and there's other ones too that I'm sure people would recognize, but those particular names, you've seen those for almost 100 years. You know, we're just two years shy of this. So I just thought that was interesting.
Very nice. Thanks for sharing that, sharing, sharing the people's business or doing the people's business. And so that, that is my report for this evening.
Thank you. Restrooms down Central Park West will stay open. They are heated, so the ones that are by the ice skating rink and the, the new park will stay open throughout the whole year, just an FYI. All right, on to number 10, which is the consent agenda. Under A, we have presentation of minutes. There are one. It is the city council meeting of October 2nd, 2023. Recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, minutes of meetings, there are seven, and the recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under C, department reports for September 2023, there are 11. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under D, finance reports for September 2023, there are four. The recommended action there is a motion to receive and file. Under E, applications and petitions, there is one. We have an application for a combination Class A slash Class A license from the Family Dollar Stores of Wisconsin LLC located at 1909 Washington Street. The recommended action is a motion to approve the application and authorize issuance of the license. Under F, summary of verified bills for the month of September 2023 for $2,347,470.60. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. And finally, under G, it is a zoning text ordinance amendment regarding permitted roof materials in section 10-1-20 of the zoning code. The recommended action is a motion to schedule a public hearing for November 6, 2023 at 6:00 PM as recommended by the Plan Commission meeting on September 11th, 2023. The recommended action for the consent agenda as a whole is a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Scott. Second by Darla. Council discussion. See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Brings us to number 11, which are the city council formal items. We have two. Under A, we have a resolution adopting amendment number one to the project plan for tax incremental District 14. Recommended action, motion to receive reading and adopt the resolution or to waive reading, I'm sorry. Greg?
Yes. TID number 14 is out at the Woodland Industrial Park. It was adopted about two years ago. The plan essentially provides for assistance to businesses building or expanding at the park, subject to a written development agreement that would be approved by city council. It also provides for certain infrastructure investment. Elizabeth has really done all the work on this amendment. I would just say it, it, based on activity we've already seen with a commitment to all energy management, which assisted with construction of its new facility, a pending development that we've discussed in closed session with council, it would mean new construction out there and will be, is seeking TIF assistance. In order to have this ability continue in the future, the amendment increases the available funding contingent upon the dollars being there in new development to, to, excuse me, provides additional funding for such direct grants to businesses and also boosts funding to an extent for the extension of utilities south of Highway 310. So extending Brown's Drive potentially, I think we called it Enterprise Way on the plans back over to Woodland Drive. But those are the two major activities addressed in the amendment. Elizabeth can answer questions if you have more specifics. This was reviewed by the Plan Commission. It's gotten preliminary review by the Joint Review Board. Plan Commission last week held the public hearing as required by statute on an amendment to the project plan. And if approved tonight by council, the final step will be to go to the Joint Review Board consisting of representatives of each of the distinct TIFs. So along with the Plan Commission, I would recommend adoption of the resolution for this amendment number one to the TIF plan.
Thank you. Looking for a motion on this? Thank you, Bill. Second by Jeff. Council discussion. This is a very good deal, I think, for the city of Two Rivers. It's a very good investment for the city of Two Rivers in our industrial park. We got some momentum going in that industrial park. We want to keep that moving for sure. So, did you have your hand up, Jeff? Sorry, okay. Resolution, this is a roll call vote. Lisa?
Darla Leclair?
Aye.
Tim Petry?
Aye.
Bonnie Schimelunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Ohusky?
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey?
Aye.
Tracy Coach?
Aye.
Bill Leclair?
Aye.
All in favor?
All right, on to B, consideration of three-year renewal agreement for the calendar years 2024 through 2026 with the Lake Shore Humane Society and the city of Manitowoc providing for the housing and care of stray animals from the city of Two Rivers. Recommended action is a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. And it looked like there might have been a memo also from the police department that was on our, on our desk here.
That was handed out tonight. I'd, I'd asked Chief Miner to get us some stats as far as this service provided to the city by Lake Shore Humane Society. Ben can certainly come up and address it if you wish. I'll just highlight, there's a statutory responsibility for the city to provide in some fashion for seven days of care for stray animals taken into custody. And last year, the Humane Society reports, they handled or they, they took in 56 stray dogs and 83 stray cats from Two Rivers. So a total of 139 stray animals attributed to our community. It's not a business we want to be in. We were briefly in that business for a while when we were in between providers. And I can tell you the, the emails that came out saying, there's a feral cat on the loose in the police basement garage, or there's a, there's a dog and we're not sure where, where to put it, so it's in the back of a squad right now, aren't, aren't a good thing. If you do the math, those 139 strays were well cared for at Lake Shore Humane. And, and as you know, they basically pick up the cost beyond that initial seven day hold. Comes to $68.59 per animal lodged. Now, if the animal was reclaimed, there are also fees that are derived from the, the owner or if it's adopted out, there's some offsetting fees. But the charges reflected in the new agreement, which the two cities sat down with, with the Humane Society about three weeks ago, do reflect some increases. The total contract going to 42,500 for 2024, 46,000 for 2025, 49.5 for 2026. That reflects discussion we had about the Lake Shore Humane Society's rising costs, just like everyone else's. The contract gets divvied up 75% Manitowoc, 25% Two Rivers. And within a rounding error, that's where our 2020 census populations came out, basically a three to one ratio. So there's some stats there for so far this year too, 40 stray dogs and 63 stray cats for this year. Can tell you, the, having adopted a cat at the Humane Society this past weekend, they have over 250 cats and kittens in their charge now, either at the building there or in foster. So that, that's more a people issue than an animal issue. That's my editorial comment, but it, there've also been some trends post-COVID of some animals that got adopted being abandoned. And the, we did hear that the reclamation rate, especially for dogs, you know, people saying, yeah, that's my dog, I'll take them back, is not what it historically had been. So this is a very valued service and I know both the chief and I highly recommend authorization for this renewal for another three years.
All right, thank you for that. Looking for a motion on this?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Second by Darla. Council discussion.
What happens if they're full? Are they not full?
I know they have.
Will they take it in if it's a city thing or?
I know they have a number of foster families that help sort of deal with that when they get seated.
Yeah, I just told them.
I don't know that we've ever been turned away. Chief, can you speak to that?
Walk up here, unusual. Yeah, so they don't typically turn us away for the police department working for the city. So when they put a ban on that, that's for most of the people coming in and just dropping off animals. And, and it wasn't just them, there were other places. If you've watched the news, I think it was Fondleac that took in all of a sudden like 130 cats. I know Manitowoc, for instance, just down in the Cleveland area, took in quite a few, probably in the 30s. She did talk about how particular and, and regional they are. So even though Cleveland is so close to Sheboygan, that doesn't matter. That's still a Manitowoc problem and they're very strict about really not kind of working together that way because of their own problems. So, and I would also add that one of the services that, that they've really helped us with, that you guys can maybe relate to, is it's not easy right now to get a veterinarian, especially in this area, because we've had a retiree, we've had other ones that have kind of left the area. And what they've done is they've actually opened up their services for us as far as they'll hold one day a month or one day a week time periods where they'll take in everybody that they can to get rabies vaccinations, for instance. So what we'll deal with frequently is issues where our CSO especially, but also officers are following up on dog complaints because we get a lot of those. And as you would imagine, if you have a dog at large, we'll follow up on everything then, like licensing, rabies. Well, you can't get a license if you don't have the rabies stuff. And a lot of times there was backlog of several months before an animal could get in for rabies. So now they're able to get those rabies vaccinations and then also do the licensing. And they've actually worked to do some of the licensing for us too. So it's kind of all in one shot that they really serviced. Two Rivers kind of unique from Manitowoc. So we're thankful for that too.
Some staff training as well, chief?
Yeah, I put in there, annually they'll come in and they'll teach our officers how to use, you know, safety gloves, catch poles and use them properly so they're humanely done. You know, you could give me a lot of tools like maybe at, at Water Department or DPW and I'm not going to use them right. So you can imagine officers are the same way. So they'll actually be trained professionally on how to do it. So after that, then they also get training in various other laws and things like that and what, what the Humane Society can do for them and what they can't do for them. I would also say that unlike other, several other things, for instance, LHS is always available for contact. We've had some very high profile cases, unfortunately for a small community where we've had dogs or cats, you know, involved, maybe even some weird animals that we come across. And they're more than willing to come in and assist us with, you know, actually taking those themselves because they're more trained with animals. So in the middle of the night, they've come out and they've taken animals back to their shelter for us.
All right, fair to say, chief, we may be coming shortly with, it's not a Lake Shore Humane Society thing, but an ordinance amendment pertaining to some exotic pets based on some very interesting encounters that our officers have had of life.
Yeah, we've had some interesting ones and, and I know Lake Shore Humane said, if you ever watch that, and I do frequently because, you know, they're a great asset to us and, and keeping an eye on theirs. I mean, the amount of parrots and just oddball, just different animals that they've taken in has really gone through the roof. And, and she did share like the struggles with COVID where it seemed to be the fancy idea when everybody was locked in their houses. And now unfortunately you're starting to see just like RVs or, or any number of other things. Now all of a sudden the market has kind of crashed on that. People are back to work. She described, as you can imagine, now these animals are getting separation anxiety and they're ripping up houses and now people are kind of getting fed up and they don't have the means to take care of them. So they just go and dump them off at LHS or they call us to go on and address them. And you know they're pets, but you know, you can't do anything to find that owner. So when you look at those reclamation rates, I mean, to take in 100 plus animals and only six people actually admit that they lost them, that's concerning.
All right, thank you. Any other council discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And for information only, we're going to move that right ahead of number 12. You got that or you want me to get it?
Oh, sure, you can go with it.
Go, I'll get it, sure. For information only, we have a Personnel and Finance Committee Budget Review Meeting Thursday, October 19th and the 26th of 2023, right up here in council chambers. Those begin at 6:00 PM. And we also have a city council work session meeting Monday, October 30th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. So there is no meeting next week, Monday. And a city council regular meeting of Monday, November 6, 2023 at 6:00 PM. We're going to go into closed session. Do we expect any vote when we come out of there?
I, I don't think so, other than to adjourn for the evening.
Okay. So it looks like we will solely adjourn for the evening after closed session. Closed session, the city council reserves the right to enter into closed session per Wisconsin statutes 19.851E. When deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reason require a closed session. Tonight, there's a consider possible city assistance to a development project. Looking for a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Seconded by Tim. Thank you. Council discussion. See none, this is a roll call vote. Lisa?
Bonnie Schimelunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Ohusky?
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey?
Aye.
Tracy Coach?
Aye.
Bill Leclair?
Aye.
Darla Leclair?
Aye.
Tim Petry?
Aye.
All in favor?
All right, we are officially in closed session. We'll lose the mics.